I'm glad Kelly's coming as well.
We'll be traveling together.
Okay.
Your property was going to do well. You don't understand me.
Right.
Good, how are you? You too.
Right.
If we were stating that, how come you not coming in and out of my?
Yeah. Just take a look at it up there and see, I don't know exactly where.
She needs to be here for that.
If he can get in there, there'd be no problem, right?
But you should be here for your party.
Yeah.
No, I don't think it'd be a problem. She may.
I waited and I thought maybe the, the other gentleman that was standing there, so he was bringing it out. I didn't know his name, but um, I figured he would come over there or at least bring the straw.
You look at my property lines and then, anyway.
Do we need to keep track of the dog or is that something he's gonna check in on?
Um.
They already got the rig.
He's responsible for keeping track of us.
Boy, boy, never knows.
So we gotta need a monitor of that.
I think they'll be like, if he comes home, he may not be here today. He has the option of walking off sometimes.
All right, gentlemen, I have six.
Yeah.
Oh, one. Father, we are so grateful and thankful for this opportunity, as always, to come together to discuss the business of our county. Lord, we pray that you would lead, guide and direct us in all that we do and say, and that it would be pleasing, acceptable in your sight and beneficial to all parties concerned, and it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in pledging the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Missy. Lakeville meeting order, June sixth, two thousand twenty-three, six P M. We've had a copy of the previous meeting's minutes and looked over. I make a motion, we approve the fact that the motion's been made and seconded to approve the previous meeting's minutes. None opposed, motion passes. Moving down to appointments and hearings, we have a public hearing for sending ordinance regulating telecommunications towers. Uh, we will open that hearing now. There is anybody here for the telecommunications tower public hearing? We can hear you out if, or we'll, we'll leave it open for fifteen minutes and move on to the next item, in case anybody comes in. And dog wardens and facility concerns.
There, I, Regina and Bonner are coming, they're not quite here, so I don't know if they want to bump them down. I don't know if everybody's here for Boozeville, it needs to be.
Everybody here for Boozeville?
Yeah, we're here.
Okay.
Well, we can move on down to Boozeville for your A R P request.
I have given each one of you a copy up there after hand.
Gentlemen, here.
We are requesting the money to replace old expired fire hose and um, color coordinate our hose with the pump panels of our truck. And that is also including a little bit of spare, so we have spare hose for each truck. Um, also three hydrant bags with the fittings. That's to just have um, everything we need to hook to a hydrant quickly in one bag. All we gotta do is pull it out of the back of the truck and hook everything up and then a demo, two demo saws, which are K twelve's, so we can cut through roofs. Uh, we'd like to switch to the battery operated ones, cause they're lighter and smaller and do just as good a job. Do you guys have any questions?
The, the saws that we're replacing are, we're replacing some old gas ones that are obsolete, we can't even get parts.
We can't even get parts to fix the one.
It's thirty years old.
Uh, it might be older than that.
So you're requesting for total for your hoses, for your saws, uh, for your hydrant bags, a total of thirty-four nine oh two?
Yes.
And that is all of it?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve. And I'll second it. Motion's been made and seconded to approve thirty-four nine oh two to the Boozeville volunteer fire department for demo saws, new hoses, and hydrant bags. Um, we have we, we wanna do A R P for that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
So what you guys will need to do, and we'll have you sign on there, is just agree on the funding that you can afford or just, and then any invoices you have needed from the
Okay.
Then you can do all of that fine.
Yeah, and this will be complete as soon as everything gets here. I know hose is like four monthly terms.
Just for a second.
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
We were actually, we just waited on a set of year for almost thirteen months. That's how backed up they are from COVID.
Everything's backed up.
And the next time we come to Booze, they always want some booze.
There you go. Uh.
Let me spray you with the hose, Tim.
Yeah, you want it out of the hose? Thank you all very much.
Thank you, gentlemen, for all you do. We appreciate what you all do.
Keep up your good work.
Yeah, hold on one second, I gotta find. If not, one, cause it's hard for me to.
It is not.
Chrissy, you want a blue pen?
No, that's fine, thank you. I don't think so, it's boring, I'm gonna say it, but, well, I don't think it's, and it's okay. Okay, that's fine.
I have one, but it'll get me.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Sammy.
We don't mean to ask, and runs a, tonight's our regular meeting and we got stuff to do, like.
You do.
No problem. I, now I got stuff to do, orders, right?
All right, thank you.
Thank you all.
Hey, thanks guys.
Six fifteen. Yeah, you're fine.
Oh, okay, cause Gina's, that's what Gina said, sixteen.
Oh, that's fine.
We'll wait on Gina. Uh, anybody here for B S D?
Not yet.
Well, we can move on down to uh, Grantson Projects.
I, okay.
For the Pretty Town Project, I just wanna come and give the commission a, a quick update. Um, we've been working on, I know we talked a few weeks ago on, on some other issues, but just wanted to give you a quick update on the, on the Pretty Town project. We have everything complete, all the permits are in hand, and I can give a, a little handout here. I'm sorry, should've done this first.
You're fine.
Just walk through it. And uh, always stick together when you're coming in. There you go.
Thank you.
Thanks, all. So just, we've got all the, the D O H, uh, the health department, that's a V P H, and we had to get a construction storm water, we had to, to do that, actually through graft and to get it. And uh, but we've received all those, all the right of ways have been obtained now. Uh, we got a right of way agent ran all that through us. We received our waiver from the P S C, so we don't have to go through the P S C. We got that permission, and we've got our title opinion. So, alls we're trying to do now is we have to get permission to bid from the funding agency. We clicked everything off. We, we have tried to call and tried to call, and I guess there's been some turnover down there, but uh, through the help of the region, uh, Sheena and Shelby, the region, we have a conference call with them a week from tomorrow. So, uh, we will be seeking permission to bid and hopefully, they've got all our documents down there. Hopefully, they can go through the front end and make sure we've got, you know, D V E requirements and everything. I think everything is in, and we'll get permission to bid. So, the point of this, uh, coming tonight is, hopefully you'll see something in the paper towards the end of June where we're advertising for construction bids. We also gotta get permission from the W D A, remember we went and got a little extra money from the state ARPA money. Uh, the requirements I just listed here are typically what they need for us to bid as well, so they have everything. Uh, I think I've checked all the boxes, I just gotta get one more checked on, permission to bid. So I just wanted to let the, uh, the commission know, cause I'm not gonna be able to make your, your next meeting in two weeks, and Kevin, the tall young man, he's gonna be on vacation, so I I know, I can't believe I let him be on vacation, he's, he's only twelve years old, like me that I am. But, anyway, we hope to put it in the paper, uh, like I said, hopefully by the end of June. And uh, I think uh, Sheena and Shelby might be here at the next meeting to be able to update you and stuff, so. Is there any questions on that? Just wanted to let the commission know that.
Sounds like you have the ducks in a row.
I hope we did.
Get this thing moving and done.
The engineering D N C part did all through the paper, it's the top.
Right.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We add up the other health department.
The only thing I have in the health department is that the old building came down yesterday. Um, so I think they were done today, starting to clean up the, the old building is down, and I do not have anything on the broadband project.
Okay. We're gonna move back up to our six fifteen.
Hi.
Ladies.
Papers here for you guys. For some reason, we are having an abundance of dogs, like more than I've ever seen since I've been here. This is just what we've been.
We do multiply, you know?
Yeah, we've been doing grants and fixing for as long as I can remember, you'd think the numbers would start to go down. You got one, Bobby?
I got this one.
So, did you guys know that we are a sixteen kennel facility? Our facility is not in the greatest of shape, we do what we can with what we have. But since January, we have moved a hundred and twenty-eight dogs through our facility. That's a lot, that's more than what we've taken in some years. Out of those, we have, we've picked up nineteen from one court case, seventeen from another. We are still currently holding seven dogs for a court case. So that has been since January, we don't even have a date yet. So, seven of our eight kennels on our side, occupied by court case dogs that cannot move. So therefore, when we get a call about a bite hole, or we have a cop calling us in the middle of the night, they've arrested somebody, need us to come get the dog, we don't have any place to put it. We have had to call the Humane Society and ask them to foster an animal, to meet us at the shelter, in order for us to open a kennel to get our dog in. We have turned down two bite holes that we could not quarantine due to total lack of space. We have a waiting list hanging on our wall of people wanting to surrender animals to us. And my fear is, if we can't take them, then they're going to dump them, and then we're going to end up with them anyways. So we have, I think you guys have four in Foster Kelly, besides where it's at our shelter. And I think that pretty much takes care. We're just here like, what do we do?
What do we do?
We currently have twenty-three dogs and we're a sixteen kennel facility. We have dogs double up in kennels.
We have dogs in crates in our office.
Yeah, and then, I mean, if we're taking them out of a, a situation.
We can't do that, we can't.
We're not gonna do that.
Bonnie, did you enlighten me a little bit, I know, I've been up, I know where you're talking about, but the Humane Society.
It's all the same.
It's all the same.
It's all the same.
It's one building, but what we consider, like when you walk into the first side of it, there's eight kennels, and we've always considered those the county's kennels, that's what we move. And then there's eight kennels going down the other side of the wall, and we've always considered that Humane Society kennels, like dogs that are waiting for adoptions. We had two large kennels that are outdoors, but they have a, like a roof built on them, they're pretty much unescapable. Those are our bite hole kennels, which are both currently full of dogs right now. And then we have three small kennels out back. We consider them a temporary kennel, like if a dog needs to just stay overnight or something, we, we're housing dogs in them currently, but we have box fans hooked up, and that is very unsafe. But it's all metal, three sides around it, it's basically an oven this time of the year. It is so hot in there. But we have no other, we don't have any other choice. I've had to, we're to the point, we're gonna have to put dog boxes up and chain up dogs. If they keep coming in. There's no place to take them.
To put them out for us to clean.
No, we're trans, we're like, in and out. Don't shift, so the dogs where they normally get four hours a day outside are getting an hour.
What's, what's usually the process?
We take a dog home to our houses, and we can't do that anymore, I don't know, she has it.
I mean, what's usually the process, if you, if you pick a dog up?
Five days.
Five days?
Five business days.
Five business days.
Five business days, we post it. And then if it's suitable for adoption, we turn it over to the Humane Society. Now that, of those hundred and twenty-eight dogs that have come through there, the Humane Society has done a wonderful job of moving dogs what they can. But then you also run into the big black dogs, the pit bulls, the little whitey dogs, and they just, they don't move as quick. So it takes time.
And you have to put those dogs down, or, sorry?
Well, that's.
And then, the other thing with the Humane Society, we, we work closely with rescues, in state, outstate, wherever they'll take them, but those rescues right now are just overwhelmed.
Every facility.
And, and like, and like, ones that normally take them from us and adopt them out into the Pittsburgh area or whatever, are having a hard time as well, so there's, and we don't have that avenue. We, I got a call, it's been a couple of weeks ago about, um, they had a warrant and then we had to take animals out of there, and they're like, I was like, I don't have anywhere to house these dogs, and they're like, call another facility.
We can't.
And then especially if it's a court case, it's gotta be.
It's gotta stay in town.
Stay in town, you know, so we can, well, and Saturday, we were up there cleaning and Humane Society volunteers do Saturday and Sunday, and they'd be holidays that they have off, so we were up there cleaning Saturday, and one of the officers came up and said, I need a leash, and I said, for what? And he said, I have a dog in the car, I picked it up and, out of the middle of the road, and I said, where am I supposed to put it? And he said, he said, I don't know, but I need to leave it here. And I'm like, well, and then Bonnie said. Out of the way. Yeah, she's choosing our way in, and I said, well, I said, I'll take the dog, and I found a temporary kennel till, you know.
I mean, it's the point that Kelly's taking dogs home.
Yeah, and then the, the owner, well, has contacted, and I don't know that, and he can.
He's stayed, he's still out of state, he'll be here tomorrow morning.
Tomorrow morning.
So, then we deal with that, technically, we should be able to adopt that dog out in a couple of days, but we won't, cause it's a black, big black dog.
Bonnie, you said something about five days, huh?
Five business days, so, and once we pick up a stray dog that nobody claims or calls about, five business days, and then we, we're legally allowed to adopt it, they can adopt it out, we don't do the adoptions, but they do. They're turned over at that time to the Humane Society. Then we vet them, you know, we, we stay and neuter them before they're ever taken out of there, they're spayed or neutered, and then. And the vets are even backed up there, we're having to hold them for. And we, we have, uh, till June, the end of Ju, um, June twenty-ninth, our next set of appointments. So there we had three dogs sitting there waiting for that process to happen. Because they can't even, yeah, we're gonna adopt them out without spaying them.
There's no such thing as putting them to sleep anymore.
We have, we have euthanized five.
Those are usually aggressive dogs.
They're, they're. Nobody wants to euthanize a dog that is adoptable, so we had four aggressive and one feral that we've put down so far this year.
So, wh- what's your recommendation to, or what's your solution?
We don't have one, that's why we're here. We're like, anything that you guys can do to help us, can you provide us more kennel space? Could we possibly get into the running for a better shelter? I mean, a sixteen kennel facility is.
Not enough for our county.
Is there any way we can do a levy?
I haven't talked to my other two commissioners, but we're gonna be thinking about building a new facility for you all.
I know, we started.
That's my thinking.
To answer your one question, can we do a levy now, because we already have seven, I believe, and we're matched out.
Okay.
I think there's only, if I'm not mistaken, there's only two counties in the entire state that have seven levies.
Oh my gosh. Wow.
Do you know if there's any like grant programs out there that could help our county get a better facility? Like, I mean, I don't know if you have somebody that works with.
Ranson County, Alpea, or Marion.
They're, they're actually, yeah.
They're full too.
Yes. We've talked lately to them and.
Like, look, Barber County is probably similar to our size.
Barber County.
Do they have any?
Gives dogs away.
Do they have a dog pound?
Yes.
They do, but we've been there and it's horrible.
Like, our dog pound looks like the rich, it's horrible comparatively.
Like, they don't do vet, they don't vet them, they don't stand here, they just, they just give them away.
So they know you're not.
One of the main problems up there is where their facility is, it's just not in an area that really can be expanded. Um, we're, we're dealing with a, an area that probably won't allow for any more of a septic system than we already have. So I think at some point, we're gonna have to go up, and, and Kelly and I have talked about this, and Tony and I have talked about this, gonna have to look at a new area to, to build a new facility, and that's the tricky part, is finding that location.
Cause no one wants a dog shelter next to their.
That's right, that's right. So I mean, certainly open to any ideas, and Krista, if you, through your assessor's office comes across, but that's really the first step, is finding.
And that's a long-term solution, it sounds like we have a short-term problem.
Right, you have to, because you're having so many collapsed cases.
That's, you're looking three years out, so if we start, we'll turn it now, you know, how, how long that takes.
What about, like, can we provide, if we have a boarding facility, can we get the court case dogs out? Like, we're six months holding these dogs.
That's, I mean, you can get rid of seven of them right there.
Yeah.
I don't know why it would be, if it's a court case.
But you'll never get your money back.
No.
You will never.
You're never gonna get your money back, but somebody broke the law somewhere that had these dogs that should be responsible for boarding them for their court case.
Right.
Yeah.
So, whoever broke the law on whose dogs they are, should be the one that's footing the bill at the boarding facility. We're not a boarding facility, we're a dog.
And that's what I say, so when they go to court, they tell them they owe us five dollars a day for every day that the dog was at our facility. And as long as I've been there, I can never recall us getting that money. We would never get that money back.
Right, and you guys right now are paying for medicine for some of those dogs.
Yes. So. Yeah, thousands of dollars of that bill.
Yeah, so there's a, now, court cases really a big problem.
Right, for a short-term solution, what would be your recommendation?
Well, if we can't, if we can't get possession of the court case dogs, like if they can't, yeah, if they, could, is there some way they can make her sign them over, move them?
Who was, who was signing the court case dogs to our pound?
Uh, John Moore told us to take the court case dogs.
Can we have John Moore assign them to a kennel?
But you still will have to fund it, I think is our issue too, and I know Vicki Gray has started a boarding.
It's feeling healthy too.
Is that what she has?
There's a circle and pet motel.
I think there's. Said something, something, she had a stroke, she goes, she has.
She's not doing that.
Is there some way we can make the people that own these dogs responsible for?
I wish we could, I mean, but you can get one out of the firm, I think.
Well, even if you're not gonna pay. For example, we have one that is very ill, he is old.
I, he said the need of him for that, um.
Then we had to have a costume, like before he delivered failure, basically. So I called the prosecutor, asking if they could contact the owner to make a decision to let the dog go, you know what I mean? And they just, they won't, they won't contact the owner, they won't speak, they won't.
And some of those older dogs that are in the court case system, those are adoptable dogs.
They are.
Even though they're old, there are people that take senior dogs and, um, so that, we could move those dogs, if we could gain ownership of them, but we can't.
But then we also have a court case dog that you can't lay hands on, she's literally knocked it out of town in six months. The other one, we can have more time to let him out, but she will not, she will carry you up if you put a collar on her.
Hey, you guys, I have John here on the phone. John, can you hear me?
Yep, sure can.
Okay, um, they just had a couple of questions about the legality of, of getting these dogs to another location. Do you, can you authorize for these dogs to be transferred to a, like a boarding or a kennel?
No, I can't. Case has not been heard yet.
Do we have a set?
For us, we have to be successful in the, in the case of coming up, where she could no longer have dogs, then I don't care what you do with them.
Okay, do you have a date for that, John?
I thought we were told two weeks.
Okay. Cause right now, I guess they still have seven of those dogs. I think Sam has a question, let's go to you there.
Hey, John, Sam.
Yeah.
So there's no way for us to send them to a actual boarding facility and?
As long as, as long as we can get a balance with her case, which will happen.
Yeah, I mean, that's, as, as far as I'm concerned, I think it should be the responsibility of the owner to board their dogs until, until their case is heard.
The owner, right now, the owner was ordered not to have the dogs back. She's on bond and she's not allowed to have the dog.
Would, it would probably be cheaper for the county to have them boarded, so we can actually use our dog pound facility.
Well, you can do that, just so we know, you know, I can't, we can't get the dogs up yet. If they wanna board them, it's something like, as long as we know where they're at. You know, once she loses her case, they can do with dogs whatever they wanna do.
Then we can give them to the Humane Society, let them adopt them, or whatever the process is there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. She cannot have the dog.
Is she, is she responsible for the payment, John?
Yeah, I kept telling everybody to, to uh, keep track of how much money's owed.
We have to have that.
And the court will order her to pay that fee?
Yep, it sure will. Cause I don't know if she's got any money, cause she's lying to everybody from the get-go.
Well, she can go to jail for not paying her fines.
So then.
Never paid the jail.
So, just to clarify, if we can find facilities to take these dogs, we can do that, as long as we can keep her up to where those dogs are, until she has to surrender ownership of the dogs, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
But we may have to pay as well.
We will.
I mean, that's what we're doing now for medicine and stuff until.
We're having five dollars a day.
It's about forty-five dollars a day.
To board a dog?
One dog.
Did you hear that, dog, forty-five dollars a day per dog?
She's gonna end up, my gut feelings, right, she's gonna end up going to jail. She doesn't have that kind of money, I can tell you that.
Okay.
We'll, we'll order her to pay. She won't be able to pay.
Okay. All right, do you guys have any questions for him?
Figure out, please, put the damn dog.
All right, John. Thank you.
In the past, in the past, we have always, like, we've taken dogs to our, our house and kennel. Like, at, one time around the house, I said, um, how many you've taken them?
I don't know. Like, if I take another dog home, I'm getting divorced.
A short-term solution, would, would it be more kennels?
More kennels.
And when we're talking about a kennel, are we talking about a cage, or are we talking about something you have to build?
Something you have to build.
It'll have to be built.
To be secure for the dogs, cause if you're not there, you can't watch the dogs.
Do we have room for kennels where we're currently at? Additional kennels?
I don't know, if you guys could put up like, almost like a carport and put a few kennels inside of a carport, so it's, it's over, you know?
What I'm looking at here is this, under dog tags. I have forty-seven thousand dollars, now I don't know how far that's up.
But I'd hate to blow that on temporary kennels, if they could go toward a new shelter, you know?
I'm sorry?
I would take.
Forty-seven thousand dollars isn't gonna scratch.
It's not gonna hurt us.
A new shelter.
No.
No.
But it may alleviate some of the problems.
But if we could get kennels now, that we could transfer to a new facility, you know what I mean, like something that could be manageable.
So Gina, you actually talking about kennels that, you can move the dog, would you put them in there temporarily?
But you know how our raven pins are, like our raven.
They're steel, like they're not ones that you can go like this.
What we need with the roof over it, so that we could, and that, and that would solve it for now, but you're, that's not gonna work in the winter, you know?
That's what I was concerned about.
But I was just saying, if we're gonna spend money like that, we need to spend money on something that if we do get a new facility down the road, that we could reuse those kennels in a new facility, move them to a better place.
How big is a kennel?
Ten by ten.
And you need one kennel per dog?
Pretty much, because they probably, you can't, I mean, we have some that are together right now, but they're smaller. We have two Beagles together, we had two Basset Hounds together, we have two Chihuahuas together.
Do you have space up there for seven, ten by ten kennels?
No.
I don't know.
But, I mean, we can probably, the ten by ten, could we like split down the middle?
If we, we can make something work, I mean, if you guys can provide us something, we will come up with something that will work.
And for instance, your kennels right now are the ten by ten.
Uh huh. No, our indoor kennels are small, our indoor kennels are, I don't know.
Three by, three by five inside and then three by five on the outside, we're gonna go in and out.
It's like a.
So they're not necessarily have to be ten by ten.
No, but what you, what you could purchase, like at Tractor Supply, are usually a ten by ten. Now, we could probably get online and see if we can, but the kennels that we have now are like, they're built, they're block, and then they have like wire on top, and then part of them's inside, part of them's outside, so they can come in out of the weather and in out of the heat, and they can go back outside where it's, you know, to get fresh air, use the bathroom, but that won't work for a temporary.
What about a, a divider? Is there a possibility you could get a divider for those kennels?
What about a, a divider? Is there a possibility you could get a divider for those kennels that you currently have now that's ten by ten and make them five by five, five by ten?
We only have two.
We only have two of those.
And those are supposed to be our bite holds.
Yeah.
And what?
Our bite holds.
They're, the two big kennels that we have are still reinforced and that is what we're supposed to quarantine aggressive bite dogs that are not up to date on shots. And we also use them as puppy kennels sometimes because they're away from everything else. But not right now, they're just used as housing pup or dogs.
And we're confident we can, we can bleach it. So if we, if we separate them, I mean, there's no way to do that.
There's no way to separate those. But I mean, if we could get like a carport, maybe we could, work with a fencing company or some kind of kennel company to put us some smaller kennels. We'd have to have a pad of concrete, a carport and some kennels.
Because they dig out and then we'd be in the same boat, having to go get them again. If, if they, if they.
And they climb out, so you gotta have a, you gotta have a top.
Oh, we have that.
It amazes me what dogs can get out of that. But those big runs that we have down there, I watched a dog just a couple of weeks ago just clear that thing. It, it's taller than I am, just, oof, gone.
Very.
Yeah.
Very high.
Yeah. So they have to have a top, they have to have sides, they.
And the chain link has to be strong enough because we had one down there and that one chain link thing that Bobby had and it went right.
Hey, hey, you guys, if this case goes like John's thinking in a couple of weeks, in that time, if you bought some of those smaller kennels for the dogs, would that suffice for a few weeks? That you could take, if you've ever got a new facility? I don't, and I don't know what's humane, I don't know how long you can put a dog in a box.
Yeah.
Those are questions I, I can't answer. I don't know if you can rotate them. I guess what they, because if this is gonna happen in two weeks, you guys kinda need a solution probably quicker than it's gonna take us to get someone up there to build and concrete and all that. So what's the quick solution that's temporary?
Well, the quick solution would be to board them, but I think that that's financially probably out of the question. I do not think that we can buy a wire kennel and stick a dog in it for twenty hours a day. It's just, that's, that's not very nice.
Well, the kennels will go bad for me.
So what are you doing right now? Where, where are the dogs right now?
Her house, her garage.
But they're, so they're not at the facility right now?
No, they're at the facility. The seven court case dogs are actually at the facility. They're not allowed to leave the facility. We have to be in control of them is what we were always told. Now John Moore is saying that they can be boarded elsewhere.
And, and we've had people offer to foster some of those court case dogs, but the problem is people foster dogs and they're failures. And they wanna keep the dog. Well, you can't keep the dog. And, and it comes with the financial part too. And we can't guarantee that they wouldn't let the dog loose or it wouldn't get loose or it wouldn't get hurt or something.
You can't give the court dogs to them.
We can't let them go out.
They have to have business taking that way that the business is responsible for there.
Yeah.
That's what we, we've always been, so we've never.
So it's forty-five dollars a day?
That's, that, that's what it sort of went.
Say fifty bucks a day.
That's at, uh, old, it's pretty premature and sold to the dog.
Seven.
And there's thirty-eight dollars a day now. It's cheaper for less, for more dogs, it's cheaper for each additional dog.
And then you gotta look at your, your breed too. Like, I'm pretty sure you're not gonna get anybody to take Romeo, Celeste or Mikey. So there's three that there's no way that anybody's gonna board. But if, even if we moved four, that would help.
Okay.
But, but like we said, the one is actually Maru and Midnight are pretty, they're medicine-bound and.
Number twenty-fourteen and sixteen.
They're old and ready to.
So let's say if they, we have to board seven dogs at fifty dollars a day for three weeks, seventy-three hundred and fifty dollars.
And then I don't even, I don't know why they're saying two weeks. They told me they didn't have a court date yet.
Last time I called, they said no court date. But just because the court date comes up in two weeks, you guys know how court works.
Yeah.
It's not gonna be solved. This could stretch on for another two months.
Well, that would be my concern, cause winter seems far away, but it's not.
It's a lot.
Right. And this could get into those winter nights.
Right.
I mean, like Tony said, you hate to see any dog get put down that could be adopted, but we need to thin them out, one way or another. We don't have the facilities. It's not humane to be keeping twenty-three dogs in a sixteen-dog facility.
No.
So they're either gonna have to be put down or, or adopted. I mean, that's just the cruel odd fact about it.
I mean, they've been begging, we beg on Facebook, everybody, you know, we beg.
Well, I understand. And nobody wants to, I mean, I love dogs. And nobody wants to put a dog down, but. I mean, doing the dogs any favors by trapping them in a, in a dog pound that's double its capacity.
In a facility.
You talk about these things with Tractor Supply, I mean, are they?
They look like an outdoor kennel.
It's a fucking chain link.
Like a chain link or, yeah.
They gotta have like the strong one, not the one that's tied in with wire because the wires.
I brought in two of those and they have.
They're completely shorted.
They'll, they'll chew them up, they'll get out.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, they'll escape.
There's holes like this in the one, I mean, we can't even use it.
We, we used to have stainless steel in between them and the dogs would actually push through the stainless steel and you'd come in the next morning and they'd be two dogs in a kennel. So we had to come in and redo block in between all of the kennel walls. It's amazing when they can get out of them.
I think they're eight feet high, if I'm not mistaken. Cause I had one for my lab.
Yeah.
When we had her and she's still murdered.
Yes, we, that's how ours are.
And she's, she'd dig up the corner until she could get it out.
They chill a lot, it's not a whole day now.
Yeah. So it's not feasible to think that we can house them like that.
That's what I'm saying.
And if you have a runner, they're on, they're gone.
And I know it's, she could, could a dog down.
Hey, you guys, I have John, dog speaker, and I asked him the question, do they have to go to a boarding facility or can they go to an individual? John says they can go to an individual as long as you know where they are.
But what if something happens?
Well, if something happens, is that, but that.
The other thing is, we had people come in and they know Nicole.
Right.
So they're trying to get.
Well, I think there'd have to be some type of that. So John, would that responsibility with an individual be any different than a facility? Cause some, could something happen? Okay.
See, I don't, I don't have that responsibility, cause if it, they bite somebody or they get loo, get loose, she's gonna lose. I mean, that's just.
They'll come back on the kennel.
They'll come back on the kennel.
Absolutely. But could that not happen at a facility also? I mean, that'd happen wherever the dogs.
Anything that happens, but at our facility, I feel like that we've done it a, we've done this long enough that we, oh, a boarding facility too, yes.
But they had a boarding facility. It could happen, I mean, could pack another dog, I mean, that's a thousand things could happen. So I guess the question is, and we don't have a solution yet, but if they decided, because there's four dogs, they feel that probably could go out to an individual, um, that's completely acceptable? As long as we know where they are?
As long as we know where they are, we can go back. Until we have a court hearing and she's thrown to jail, she loses the right to have dogs for, what, five years, animals for five years? You know, that, that's the only thing, we, we can't be like the, you know, they're still fighting over those damn horse cattle.
Okay. Alright, okay, you guys have any other thing else? Okay. Hey, thanks, John.
Oh, bye-bye.
Okay.
I mean, it's, it's not feasible to do that. It's gonna come back on us and not, you know.
I don't think you guys wanna incur that risk and I don't wanna incur that risk.
Yeah, no.
So we gotta keep those four, right?
We got seven.
But four of them, three of them are.
Four of them are friendly, is what we're getting at. We got four friendly, we got two feral and we got one that is aggressive to anybody he doesn't know and children.
Okay, what about the other dog? What about, you had, that's seven, you had twenty-three dogs.
Yeah.
So what about the other fifteen or whatever it is?
They belong to the Humane Society. The only dogs, well, no, we have a white one. So currently we have eight dogs that belong to the county. That are the county's responsibility.
Oh, yeah, nine.
Yeah, nine. One supposedly leaving tomorrow. We might be down to twenty-two.
So then technically on the dog ward side, you're over by two.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, yes.
Over by two, okay. The humane society is, cause you gotta remember the dog, technically, the humane society is separate than the dog ward and your areas of responsibility legally are separate. So that's something you have to remember.
But then the other thing I would like to say is we cannot do this without the humane society. I mean, if you look at those numbers of what have come through that facility and a hundred and twenty-eight and we're griping about twenty-three that's right there now. I mean, they have done an exceptional job of moving dogs and keeping us from, I don't think any of us girls wanna come to work every day and eat the nice dogs. That's not what we wanna do.
And we're not gonna let you, so.
Let's talk humane society.
Okay.
You have, how many kennels you have?
There's eight on the humane society side. But they are all, honestly, they're all interchangeable because once we get a dog in a s- a spot, they, they kinda like to stay there. That's theirs. When they come in from outside, they know that's their kennel, so we don't move them around a lot. But basically there are eight on the humane society side. Now, when, on the weekends when the volunteers come in, they take care of the dog ward side as well.
Yeah, they do share their responsibility.
How many are the kennels on the humane?
They're the same side.
Same.
They're the same, it's the same facility.
Ten by ten, each one of them is ten by ten.
Those are like three by ten because they're indoor/outdoor, they're like long runs.
It's like a, it's like a block building that has got a partition down the middle and then kennels on both sides. You've got eight on each side. So.
And they can go indoor/outdoor.
Half is, humane societies and the other half is the dog wards. But if, you know, Pooch in cell block two is there for five days and the owner doesn't claim them, then the humane society then.
Takes ownership of them.
Takes ownership of them and they, uh, fall bark them, they spade and neuter them and, uh, then try to find them at home, but they probably leave them in cell block two.
Yes, yes, that's what we do.
Okay.
Cause that's their home.
Is there any way to expand the humane society side?
There's no way to expand that building at all. You guys actually.
I'll show you, I'll show you a picture of the.
I've been up there and I don't actually know what it looks like.
Yeah, well, we actually, we had contractors come in last summer, cause we wanted a restroom that was nice.
I remember.
Yeah, and nobody will even touch the place. Nobody will touch the electricity, nobody.
There's a lot that's looking down on it.
Yeah, I mean, your house needs a new facility, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, they're just like, it's like.
What's the name of that?
And you can fall.
Blue roof building.
The blue roof building? Yeah, but for now, we just need to figure out some kind of temporary holding facility.
Where the mower and stuff is?
Um.
And the property behind you.
It's gas.
It's gas.
Is it?
Who does it, does it belong to the?
That's what I don't know what this is.
The kennel is right behind you.
But they leased it out, that's right.
Yeah. We do, we have a building that has like the mower and stuff in it.
Do you want me to show you? I can show you.
Yeah.
Yeah, we do have a building with a mower.
I was gonna actually bring that up, if we can get that and we can send two kennels.
Long building.
Yeah, I was gonna actually. There's a reason why you guys have dogs out.
I've been, I've been.
So they're actually.
But we have the concrete, we have the concrete.
That's a roof, that's a roof, but it's over top of like four, seven.
Even if you know, you're about to get the run in there during the day when.
And put that thing on your.
Just something so they can do.
And it's going perfectly.
Put some power.
Right, so as long as the dogs all get along, we can get like five dogs out there to probably play with.
I mean, we could, I mean, we'd have to run some kind of electric if.
And then the first building.
Well, they'd have to have a fan, just, yeah.
It's like a hop, like.
Well, we used to run like an extension cord over there and plug in those cat boxes, remember?
This, well, this side is the, um, dog ward side, this is the humane society. That building right there with the brown darker roof is their office. Um, then this right here is where those puppy rounds, or puppy kennels we call them, the ten by ten that we're talking about.
That's the, that's the arcane rabies.
The bite holes, rabies hole. And that's really the problem. And then we have some parking where so we can park.
But we were just thinking that, now, we didn't think about it. We have a three-sided building.
They have that long, but you're on this line as well here. There's a little valley back here where the creek is. I'm not much building. We're attached.
And this is on an old landfill, so we put in, in the back here, we put behind the building. Behind there, we put, uh, the humane society bought a, what is the size of the pup, the round area we bought just recently?
I don't know.
A year by twenty?
Yeah, it's probably that property out to that.
We leased the minerals.
Okay.
We can still, the surface is still ours.
So, so we put a play yard back there and so if dogs can get a hole, they can get back there and play in the grass. Problem is, it's on the old landfill. And so we have youngsters picking up grass, uh, grass. And like five young buckets. Yes. We just had it come to you, just, just.
I just wanted to show you what.
Our lawnmower shed, we can, we can.
Do we really have a looking at that?
We could probably buy a, a kennel for that and make two kennels at least there.
Can you get three out of there or do you?
I don't, we have to do some measuring and some squeezing and.
Well, we'd have to have something that.
We definitely have to have a fan system, run an extension.
We could do some type of temporary shower, I think, up there.
I mean, for a short-term solution, the problem is we don't have enough room.
We could always use like the panels at a new facility if we needed to, pop panels to the.
You, you almost have to make do with what you have. What we have is a sixteen kennel dog facility and that's what we've had for thirty years or fifty years. I'm not sure how long the, the pound's been up there for at least forty-five, forty-ish years, thirty-five years. I mean, you're over the hill, so, uh, we need to make do with, with what we have, so really what can we do today?
Right.
To eliminate?
Like our, our mower shed.
We, we need to cut down either on ten dogs or get ten dogs away to somebody else, or try to make room for ten more dogs. But the, the more room you have, if you make room for fifty more dogs, you'll have fifty more dogs tomorrow.
And so you see the waiting list.
We have a waiting list that's overwhelming now, I mean.
If you guys, with the four dogs that you say are, could go out, okay? But you don't want to because you're concerned about the liability. Now, if you have, Kelly, how many humane dogs do you have right now?
I didn't think that through.
Can you now move those, at least four, those?
It's a daily thing. Like, I'm getting texts right now that people want to meet a dog and that's fine, but that's a daily thing. I mean, it's a constant thing we're trying.
They're guaranteed.
Like, and the puppies that aren't listed, they go out, sometimes they come back.
Yeah, yeah, dogs work and adopt out.
We can have four fosters that are out, they could come back at any time.
Yeah, I could bring mine back at any time.
But you can't, but you can't take those back if you don't have room for them.
No, but if they say.
But then they get some friend, you guys pick them up on the dog yard.
They're just gonna dump them out.
They're gonna dump them, is what's going on there.
And that's happened before. We have.
Take them to the company.
Yeah, and then we get a call to come pick them up.
Run. Or the bond never signed at the gate. Yeah, they, they jam them to our gate.
We just take it in your front yard, right?
My, my in-law, she always ends up with them.
Is she looking for four more?
No.
Oh.
It's so bad, we drive around and look for people with fences, so be careful.
We know where you live, Travis.
We're bidding to the delivery service side as soon as.
But would getting a couple of the kennels for our lawnmower shed, is that a possibility? I mean, I know we're just gonna fill them back up, but at least it would be.
We might have to concrete it though, cause they can dig out.
Well, yeah, so we could buy that concrete board. That's what I would do.
Or whatever, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I would do temporarily, cause it's not meant to be a permanent.
No.
It's just, it's coming down to where we can't even do our job. If we don't have anywhere to do with these dogs, where are we gonna do it?
Yeah, we can get a call.
We're gonna have to do something. If you get the concrete board and get a couple kennels and three or four, whatever you can fit in there. I'd say, go out there, go out there and measure it and see what, how much you're gonna have to have for the concrete board, the kennels you're gonna cost and let us know.
Okay.
I mean, we've got to do something, cause I mean.
Can you, can you look on there and give us a, on, on your phone and maybe give us a, a price, bulk, bulk part figure that you think?
I think they only sell them by the, the panels now, so they don't, they don't just say here's ten by ten, don't worry, you gotta buy them.
Tractor Supply gives ten by ten?
I think we have a lot of those, but I know that like Royal King offers different stuff. I know there's black ones came from Royal King that we have. But that's also, you don't wanna waste, you don't wanna run the Tractor Supply and pay four or five hundred dollars for a ten-by-ten kennel that our dogs are gonna eat in less than a week. We'd be better off to try to order from a facility that goes to animal control, you know what I mean? That's more, and then we could reuse them down the line, bring them to a better position.
And what would you do, Gina, to store those panels when not in use?
When not in use, we would store our panels and then if it comes along that we need them again, we could put them back up as a temporary holding.
So you have a ballpark figure on that?
No, but if you'd give me some time, I can give you a ballpark figure. I was trying to think of a.
I mean, seriously, but we're gonna meet for another two weeks. And if we have, call a special meeting, it's gonna be in three days. I mean, seriously, but we're gonna meet for another two weeks, and if we have, call a special meeting, it's gonna be in three days.
Yeah.
So you can just get.
So if you take the three days or two weeks, you don't need, it's a resolution.
It's a five by five.
I like that idea.
But, I mean, you could put.
You don't really, you can't, you have to do five by five.
Yeah, something like that would be fine.
What's that, four hundred?
That has four hundred, it's a five by five for four hundred dollars.
With the, with the roof too, but that's a, that's not a, I mean, as long as nothing can eat through that, you know.
I thought it was a.
Can you wrap it in wire? I mean, it's not getting stupid.
I know, you're gonna be that trash on them.
Razor wire myself.
Oh my gosh, we'd be in the vet.
They have to use.
Oh, I'm dead.
Constantly.
Can you imagine, put razor wire up around there?
Maybe it's not a good time.
That would teach you.
We're just in a smaller size, but something like this, that's already built together, that we could slide in that lawn mower shed, you know, instead of getting how many's there, you could get a smaller amount.
That looks.
And then that is something that could be used in the future, if we are ever lucky enough to get.
Is there any power in that building, right now?
No, these right here are already built, slide in, but they're actually made for animal control.
Extension board.
Board floor, so I don't know if we, if it's safe or not.
They're wanting six for that one.
It's been a year, a couple of years since we've done that, isn't it? Those doors has been up there.
Three by six by ten foot.
I don't think we like cats in June. One.
If we have a hole in the building, so we could always put just the panels across the top.
If the other, uh, uh, counties that have facilities, we pay them five dollars a day.
They don't have the room.
Well, I think they're the same, but we are actually.
They're like seventeen hundred.
Would you agree?
Yes.
I mean, realistically, humane society's overrun, our dog pound's not.
Correct.
No, but our dogs, if it wasn't for the humane.
I understand, but the humane society is taking control of the bulk of.
You know, I'm sure, but.
Cause we had to set them from the board case, so therefore.
More of them, not spending any time over there.
The dog pound has one.
We're getting more cases like, right after another, you know, I mean, like, we're to the point now, I won't leave there until I've talked that owner into signing a waiver to us, because we can't hold them.
Yeah, every six months.
Till I get started.
Well, when you got a.
And I work, you pick up nineteen dogs, I mean.
What do you do, what do you do?
Nineteen dogs and, um, that was March. And, and that lady signed the budget with her dog.
One house.
National State and the sick time and all that stuff.
Yeah.
But I'm.
I know, she can't help us, she can't, she helps herself.
We have one.
Like, if they get a call, our manager calls, we can get them all.
And it just comes right over to the metal.
So how long does, oh, we, we, humane society gets them, how long, all of you guys can do that?
Forever.
Forever, just as long as they're gone.
We have, uh, Miss Ginger's been there for almost three years, and, yeah, I would never put the dog in.
I mean, that's one thing we may want to take a look at, we can't keep dogs into.
Yeah, I, 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 no one will go for that, I'm just telling you, it's a humane.
I, I understand, but.
We're a no-kill shelter.
We're a no-kill shelter.
Yeah, we have actually a set of those.
Well, we're a no-room shelter right now, if you have no room, something will have to be done, and I understand, I don't wanna kill the dogs either.
I'm not doing it, I'll, I'll step out of here before anybody.
Everybody would, I'm telling you, everybody would not have anybody running.
I feel like so, I don't.
We're not using what you care for. There are puppies, we have a whole set of those.
Yeah, we're.
You're, you're not wrong, you're not wrong, but.
Just a vicious place in their yard.
And as many.
And that's the good thing about, like, we do, we do stay here everything before it leaves.
And we need stricter laws.
But then you also have the responsibility of our dog, like, if they're very strong or at all, I think it should be. Wants to be there, all of the shelter, people are very stressed.
Yeah. Cause what they're doing is dropping them off to us, and then going to get a puppy, it's like, this is a still.
No, we did, no, we did, so, I got mine, where like, we can grab them, and we redfly them, so if they try to come and drop off a dog, then they can never come back to us and adopt it.
Yeah, we had some guy, he surrendered a dog, not even seven months ago, and it tried, and one of our.
And we redflying him, so he cannot do that.
So we'll just go somewhere else and get one, that was the thing, so it's just on and on, I mean, we don't have a.
How big are they?
I mean, cause.
Our building is, yeah.
We need some breeding wall.
There has to be, there has to be a solution for our short-term problem, our short-term problem is, we are out of room.
Like, you guys just pull them out, or you need.
I don't have a solution for it, but then. Temporary occasion bank, I was gonna.
I just, I mean, unless they.
It's before you hire.
You think it's maybe staying under vouchers, and we have given out.
Yes, it's in a margin.
And some are full vouchers, like, they don't exceed this amount.
You think we could be, send them in her tail, and some would drop them back off.
So whatever that program has been, isn't working.
Well, I mean, for years, and.
We need to think of another solution.
We've done vouchers for years, I mean, you need to generalize that on.
Let, why don't, why don't we do this, she come up with some, some sort of solution here, to an extent, but we need to know the size.
Yeah.
So why don't you all go, come out there and measure it, and see what fits, we're gonna be here for a while.
You're gonna be here?
And then come back.
Okay.
Or call.
Or call.
I like that, I like call.
If I got paid.
Well, I think. One of you probably need to come back to the show, it's what you're gonna do.
Yeah, okay, well, we'll go up and measure, so we can pull some kind of.
Let's go ahead and get a concrete board, right, or something, on that floor.
Well, unless we find kennels that have the bottoms already, and, like, the ones that are made for the dog shelters.
Something we could do is appropriate so much money, hey, we've got, here's so much money, see what you can do with it. So maybe you oughta go check and see how much room you've got, and you have a general idea of what each one of them costs.
Yeah, so if we could come up with a general idea, and I'll lump sum a little bit.
In the meantime, we better be thinking of a new building someplace.
That would be wonderful.
Oh, I'm going.
Well, you know, the counties around us are doing it.
They are, Marion just built a million dollars, so.
They've got a big deal on Marion County. Patricia?
All right, thank you.
We got the meeting fakers?
Close the break.
Yeah, use our. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
They would love that out there.
I bumped it up.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Michelle, you are up.
Do you want to close the hearing?
Uh, yes, we can, first, we'll close our, if anybody's here for the telecommunication tower, then we'll close our hearing for the day, and we'll.
I wouldn't complain.
Too late now, move on to, to the Taylor County PSD.
I completely forgot to bring that, and to send that thing up to you, I'll do that tomorrow, you know I'm talking about, that invoice.
You got the problem solved, Michelle?
Working on it. You want a copy too?
Please.
You have them all.
Well, thank you.
You do have them all.
Okay, thank.
Except for yesterday's correspond, or Friday's correspondence, you do not have. Okay, everybody got the email that I sent back in, let me go and read the tip. Whenever Bob Myers went to Capito's office, he attached a letter that somebody wrote to the paper. And Gary said that he talked to you about that, and you were under the impression that what the county paid for was gonna fix it completely. Which, I, if I gave you that impression, I'm sorry, but he, but it was said in here numerous times, that we didn't know what was beyond that, that riprap wall that belongs to the Corps. We were hoping and praying that as soon as we opened that wall up, that that pipe would be able to be tied into, when they opened it up, there was water seeping out of it, and there's a crack that runs, well, runs, however, into the dam. Since then, we had to figure out, Morgan and everybody was there, and, and they figured out that the, the waterline underneath of that spillway, now, who does that belong to? At first, somebody said it, the city had ownership of it at one time and took care of it, and then the Corps may have taken care of it, or, or at one time. Well, nineteen forty-one, the only paper that can be found, okay, I think it was forty-one, is, there's a paper that says that, that the dam, Tiger, or the dam up there, okay, will supply the city of Grafton with raw water, in return, the city of Grafton will give them potable water up top for the Corps. Well, that's what they've been doing for all these years. The board told me, okay, let's try to find, maybe we can sue somebody, let's see what's going on, you know, because nobody wants to. I wrote the letter to, which I attached to everybody, okay, and I, and I got a response back from Jim Justice's office, and said that he's really sorry, basically, that they're really sorry, sorry about this, but we can't do anything because it's on a federal level. The Public Service Commission said the same thing, they can't really do anything because it's federal property. It all boils back to, it's federal property. So at our last board meeting, we went and we said, okay, Gary, and, and then said, okay, we're gonna try to get an attorney. Well, nobody wants to return a call, the ones that did don't wanna bother with it, they just don't wanna mess with it. And then I ended up speaking to an environmental attorney, and he said, this is what he said. Well, where is the paperwork for nineteen forty-one, there's gotta be some kind of paperwork that says that the pipe underneath that spillway that's on Corps property, that ties into the Taylor County, now, the, it was city of Grafton, okay? Who owns that, where's the paperwork on that? Well, there is none. And he said, are you sure, I said, real estate in Pittsburgh doesn't have it, I said, the, the people up there at the Corps have searched hours and hours and days looking for stuff, and there is no paperwork, it was done on a spit and a handshake. Period. He said, okay, and he asked me, he said, when they put that spillway in in two thousand, what happened, I said, oh, I said, you would think that it, there, you would think that it, that paperwork wouldn't have gotten burned up in the fire or lost somewhere, okay? The Corps never gave an easement or a right-of-way to anyone, when they put, pulled, when they poured that spillway over top of that pipe. So, in ninety-eight, they fixed the pipe inside the dam. They put the spillway on, on, over top of it, that big landing in two thousand, without giving the city of Grafton or Taylor County PSD any kind of easement or right-of-way to, to correct that. So guess whose pipe, the pipe belongs to?
The Corps.
That's right, pipe belongs to the Corps.
And you can't sue the Corps.
And you can't sue the Corps.
So, what's next, then, Michelle?
You know, we've heard, well, we should just go up there and start digging it out ourselves, and we should do this, and, well, you can't do that, because you're gonna end up in jail. You know, it took us, what, four and a half, five months just to get a permit to, to encroach on their property. You know, five to ten feet, to get into that riprap wall, that's how long, that's how long that permit took. What I was told was, is that, and Tony and I talked about this, and I talked with some of my board members and everything else, is that we need to start making a lot of noise. I got it from a good source, that yes, it did hit Mansion's office, and it hit Capito's office, whenever, whenever the corporal was down in DC. Um, he was told that this is not, this right now is not a, um, it's not important enough to, he's not concerned about this right now. Somebody else today talked to Mooney's office, and they just didn't realize, they didn't realize that this was that big of a deal. Mooney's office came back and said that to somebody up at the Corps today, just happened to run into somebody up at the Corps today and said that, now, Alex Mooney's office in Morgantown did get back with me after the letter. Um, I tried to call them back several times, and they have not returned a call, so, our solution is, that if we could get everybody in the community to start banging on the doors and writing letters to, because that's what I was told, they do not like, the Corps in Pittsburgh does not like to hear from the senators. They hate what they call congressional. To the point that, if you look on that last email on March fourteenth, and it says that Joe, he says, I was hoping you would be able to discuss with me where the current waterline repair effort is. I understand from Michelle and Morgan that the PSD does not want to proceed with any further repairs. When Morgan got a copy of that, he called me, and he said, when exactly did you and I become the people to make repairs, to decide anything, I said, we're not. Where Joe got that is beyond me. He said, I'm gonna go into a meeting, you see what his response was, I'll give you a call later today or tomorrow, we're going into a board meeting. I was told to write the, the letter to the senators. Joe's response, the attached letter to congressional leaders was not the course of action we discussed last week, and a surprise to me. Whenever I sent that up, he was mad. Mad, that, and it, and, and he had no choice then, because I sent it to Stacy, he had no choice but to send it up to to Pittsburgh, however, when he sent it up, he didn't send the pictures. I did. Maybe if we reach out, like, I told Tony today, that maybe if we reach out to, if the commission writes a letter, if we can get the city involved in this, as a city council person, maybe, the city can write a letter because.
I do, I will say this, I don't think the city's involved, wants to be involved in this, because the city feels like, why would they put up? Because they're saying this could be up to like, a ten million dollar project.
Oh, no, no, who said that?
That's what we were told today.
By who?
But, that's what we were told, could be up to that.
The estimate, the estimate that we got last year, which you all know, was a, a little over, you know, a million dollars.
That's what we were told today, it could be up to possibly ten million dollars, and the city doesn't want to, and there, there, I guess there's some funding that would cover seventy to seventy-five percent.
Here you go. Whenever Joe decided to finally call Kevin and have their little, because Eric reached out again, Sheena, somebody reached out to Sheena with the same thing, and said, well, here's seventy-five percent, if you can come up with twenty-five percent. Sheena said, that's, that's great, except for they don't own the property.
The city, you mean, the city.
As I told Kevin, this is no longer, financially, this is no longer the city's problem, or it's no longer our problem, and that is what legal counsel told me. The city is not responsible for one penny. We're not responsible for one penny, because it's on the Corps' property.
Right, well, the issue is if it's determined, that there is funding for seventy-five percent, okay, and then there's the twenty-five percent remaining. The city feels as if, why would the city put up the twenty-five, and they're reek any financial benefit from the PSD, that, so, we, you know, I don't know.
Okay, but again, like Sheena told them, we, we can't go for that funding, Joe, Joe said that we could go for that funding, the, the Colonel.
The city has to go for that funding.
But the Colonel said, off the record, that this, this is the Corps' problem. So they're trying to force, what we're trying to do is, let's not, let's not say that the county owes, or the city owes. We, we need to come back and say, as Morgan said, okay, and as the attorney said, and as, you know, the Colonel said, this is a Corps' problem. If they wanna fix it and turn it over, and say, after it's fixed, and say, okay, now we give whoever a right-of-way and an easement to this, and it's now, you're gonna be your baby for the rest of its life. But right now, we don't, there's nothing.
I don't know how to make the Corps take responsibility.
That's it.
I don't know how you do that.
Let me ask you this, is it possible to go ahead and get a right-of-way from the Corps, accept, accept the responsibility for the line and fix the dang one thing?
No, they will not give it.
Why? They've obviously let somebody the last ninety years.
Their stand is.
Use that pipe that goes through the dam.
Their stand is.
The pad, the, the pipe that goes, that's why I was telling him, the, the pipe that goes through the dam, they repaired that in nineteen ninety-eight. It's the pipe from the dam out to that riprap wall. That sits under that landing, it kinda looks like helicopter, that's the pipe that we're talking about, and that's their land. And as the attorney said, it, it's theirs, whenever they pour that, that thing on there, it's theirs. It's theirs, whenever they pour that, that thing on there, it's theirs.
Well, I think you got a couple things going on. And I think Michelle will agree with this, that there's a difference in what people are estimating the repair to cost, first of all. Because, you know, we're hearing it from one million to ten, then also getting different legal opinions. And then the third thing is, the Corps feels like it's not an emergency because we can pump from the river.
Right, okay.
Isn't that the whole shebang anyways, we're, we're not the only PSD that pumps water out of the river?
Most pump from, most pump from.
And I think that's the biggest controversy with the Corps, right? Other PSD, you get the pumps and they pump out of the river.
Yes.
Well, actually, no, well, no, actually, municipalities, we're, remember, we're different. We're PSD because most of the time, like the city of Phillippe owns theirs. The city of Phillippe owns theirs, the, the city of Grafton owns theirs, and that's the, there's the other difference too. Like Keith, when he came to our board meeting, he said, there's the difference with that too. Yes, we are different that we pull out of the dam, but most municipalities or what, will say water plants. Who are near a dam, that's how they get their water, we're the only one, you ready for this? We are the only person that does not have to pay the Corps for water.
Because of the agreement in nineteen forty-one.
Correct.
So therefore, they violated the agreement in nineteen forty-one.
That's exactly right, right now they are.
Water off.
Well.
But there's no agreement because there's no paperwork.
No, there's that, there, they found that agreement, that's the only agreement they found.
Violated the agreement, turn their water off.
Right.
Then, whoop, turn their water off until they fix the pipe and go back to the agreement. There's no sense of us giving them potable water.
But, do you know how much water they use up there?
I have no idea.
Maybe three thousand gallons, it's to flush their toilets.
Well, they'd be.
You know.
Real mad that they couldn't flush their toilets for a few months.
What, you're like, turn their water off?
This season.
Who's gonna make that decision?
I feel bad, the, the thing here is, is that, the thing here is, is that the people that, that make the decisions. Are not gonna feel the brunt of it. Because Stacy and Keith up there cannot, it, this is, it's, it's. She can say this, this, and this, and this is horrible, and this is how it needs to be, and we need to do whatever we need to do. Soon as she said, she can't just make a decision, she has to send it up to Joe, and then Joe, if Joe sees this is deemed, you know, oh. Then has to go to the next, and they have to go through, she's not allowed to bypass anybody. So, the people that need to take care of this is the Corps in Pittsburgh. And the federal government. The people that are gonna suffer the consequences for them not getting up off their butts and doing anything. Are the people up on top of the hill that have done nothing but helped us. They have gone above and beyond, those people up there have gone above and beyond to help us. They never needed to come down there last year and dig, dig down in the river to help us get those pumps in there. I mean, they, they were cutting trees and helping, and, you know, they didn't have to do this, that's not their job.
Well, Michelle, as we talk.
My solution is this, this is what Gary said, this is what everybody said, what we need to do is, we need everybody to come together. We get a, need to get a hold of Southwestern, we need to get a hold of, um, I was told today that we need to get a hold of the Taylor County Economic Development Authority.
I think you need to reach out to some of the other surrounding counties that.
Well, that's it, like, like, was it you that said, yes, we need, we need to, because it would be, Preston County would, would not be in good shape. Barber County, we feed into Flemington, but maybe the Barber County Commission could say, you know, look, if you don't do this. You know, and send it, start sending as much as you can, you know, letters up to Mansion and Capito. I was told that we would probably get a better, a better response out of Capito. When Bob Myers sent his response stuff to Bob, to Capito, she actually responded. She responded, right, she asked what was going on down here, but we haven't gotten anything back from it. And the original letter that I sent said that we need to know if the city owns the property, or. Or the pipe, or does the Corps own it, well, we've kind of established now that the Corps owns it.
Does the Corps agree that to that, Michelle, that they own that?
Those people up there do.
But those people up there weren't making the decisions.
The Colonel, and that's, that's the worst thing, the Colonel that is over Pittsburgh right this second. He said, it's their responsibility to fix it, but he's on his way out. When he was in.
Where is he, in Washington?
No, he's up in Pittsburgh right this second.
The Colonel?
Yes, yeah, and.
Is this Joe?
No, Joe is, he is, I don't know, what is his title?
Southern Area Operations Manager.
Yeah, that's what he is, he's, he's rarely up here, he's rarely up here, and he, in.
So if the Colonel admits that they own it, then they need to fix it, then what's the problem, I don't understand it.
I don't know if the Colonel has the authority to authorize such a transaction and.
He said he's on his way out, he told them up there as far as he's concerned. As far as he's concerned, um. It, it should be a Corps problem, Josh Feldman called Kevin. Um, and Kevin never got back with him and. And he, Stacy said, did anybody talk to him when he called, and I said, he never called me, I said, he called the city. And, uh. And, and he said, Stacy said, that's exactly who we needed to talk to because he's the one that could put everything in motion, and then he left.
So let me get this, make sure I'm on.
It, it's.
Understanding, so, the money that we paid to fix.
Yes.
That's the end of the PSD's.
The company and the PSD's property, yep.
It went as far as it could go, that's right.
As far as it can go, so let me ask you this. What if you just turn it on, start sucking it, and let it leak on their end until they fix it?
Well, we can't do that.
Why?
Because whenever we, they turn, open that thing back up, you'll see the picture there, it blew up, it'll blow, it could blow up that hole. It could blow, the pressure from the water could blow that pipe and that, and everything under that, and then it would just flood us, that's what it would do.
But would, would they be, what I'm saying is, if, if it's not our pipe, it's their pipe. If we fixed everything we were supposed to fix from here down, but they refuse to fix from here up. We go ahead and use what we can take. And eventually.
Well, we can't tie into it because the pipe's broke.
It's severed.
It's severed, I mean, it's, it's, it, it's.
Can't connect to it.
You can't connect, you can't even connect to it, and we didn't know, we were hoping, you know, that whenever. We got into the rip rap wall, the hope was, is that we could, that was phase one, we could attach to that until we could get the funding. For the rest of the pipe. And when they got in there, it was, it's cracked, it's cracked all the way up there to the point it's letting water out, and that's with the valve off. Up in the dam, and it's still, there's water coming out of there. The dam.
I just don't understand why the.
So if we let it attach to it.
I don't, I don't understand why the Corps wouldn't fix a pipe that's clearly theirs.
It's not their problem.
It's not their problem, that's exactly what Mansion's office said, it's, it's, it's not their problem.
Because you have another.
That's what I'm getting at, it's nobody making it their problem.
It's, it, it's their problem, and, and here, and here, you know what, Jerry made a really good point, he made a, a perfect. He said, if we could have, if we could have it to do all over again. Last year on May eighth, instead of those guys staying there sixty-some hours straight. To make sure this county and the surrounding counties had water, he should have let it go dry. That's exactly what should have happened, because as soon as somebody would have stood up and taken note, oh my god, here's a whole county without any water. You see, okay? As Eric pointed out, we were very lucky this winter that we had a mild winter, because the way our pipes, you said about us pulling out of the. You asked me about pulling out of the dam. They get clean water, these other places get clean water. Right now, we're spending more money in chemicals too, that's another reason that it's not so good, because where our intakes are not underground. If we were to put the intakes, which is gonna cost just as much money, if not more, than replacing that, that pipe, okay? But you put the intakes down here. It's not like the city of Phillippe, and it's not like I'm using them as an example, upriver and downriver. They get, they're getting cleaner water, we're getting the water right now out of the bottom of the lake. The crappiest water is what we're getting, because it's coming out, it's coming out of the gates.
It's like sludge.
It, it's coming out of the gates, and so, the, it's the crap at the bottom, whenever we were pulling up here, we're pulling from summer pool, up, way up top. And, you know, and then they would move us down to winter pool, but it's still in the center.
Right, you're getting all the silk now.
Yeah, right, okay, so. You know, people were complaining about the fish smell and whatever else last year, and this, and we're doing everything we can, you know. Uh, our chemicals is, is costing us twice as much to treat this, water too, at the moment. So, no matter what, if we said, okay, we'll go ahead and we'll pump out of the river. For the rest, for the rest of eternity, we'll set up actual pumps. It's still gonna cost twice as much money because we have to pay pumping costs. And then, no matter what we do, you're gonna have to pay for the chemicals because of the kind, the quality of water that's coming out of there. Because of where we sit and where we feed. And that, and that, or, you, that's why, that's why we can't do, I mean, it, it's, it's not feasible.
All right, Michelle, uh.
So what I'm asking is, is that if you write a letter, and you write a letter, and you write a letter and attach to everybody. And as far as, like I asked Kevin, I said, if you would just write a letter and say, look, we need you to take responsibility, and our city. Could be out without water, you know, I'm gonna reach out to Southwestern, and I'm gonna reach out to Mountain View and to Newburgh and. And I will call the commission down there and see what I can get done in Barber County. I, I don't, we don't know what else to do.
Harrison County, because we're in Harrison County too, you know.
Right, and, because what else is the solution, e- except for to start banging on doors?
I think if enough letters.
Gary, Gary said we should go to the media. Gary Boyard said, what we need to do is go to the media, and I, you know, I was talking to my son this weekend about something, and I said, you know. Mansion said that this isn't his problem, said, hmm, wonder how that would play, you know, all over that.
Better solution than even sending letters, because we've asked, you've asked.
Yep.
If it's not their problem, then. Hmm, it might be their problem if they start getting.
That's why I thought if we.
Attention.
If all of us sent letters to Capito.
Right, and started calling, and, and, right.
And like, uh, the Taylor County PSD sends a letter, the county, Taylor County Commission sends a letter, Barber County Commission. All these other people that, Southwestern Water, so forth. A, a nice letter, not one that's tearing somebody apart.
I didn't rip anybody, if you read my, I did not rip anybody, and I, I, respectfully, will you, will you please figure out what's going on? You know, I didn't put, I didn't throw, and as I told Kevin that day, I did not throw the city under the bus, if you read that letter, it pretty much says. I think, I'm pretty sure, if you read between the lines, that this is your responsibility, now where do we go from here?
Cause not like we haven't made an effort to fix.
That's exactly right.
I mean, you think to us with a problem.
And you all fix it.
And we fixed it.
That's it, it's like I said, as far as the, you know, the county and the city, I'll say that, the city, they've come down there too, the employees and stuff. They've come down there to help us. I, I don't. Gary says we should go to the media and start, or banging on the, the media's door.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, I think Gary's right.
You know, get a couple concerned citizens, get a couple concerned citizens and, and have them start calling the media and, you know. And, and have them, you know, I'll put Bob Myers on it, but I was being serious.
Yeah, yeah, Bob's good.
Yeah, I'm being, I'm being dead serious, cause he doesn't mind calling or talking to anybody about anything.
Yes.
You know?
Well, do we go media wise, or do we?
Well, I think everybody should still send a letter, and I think that that's what, I think that's what Gary says that we should do. He said the same thing, if we could get everybody to go ahead and start complaining and saying. But here's, whenever I talked to one of the workers up there this, this evening, up at the, that worked for the Corps. And he just happened, he was, they were talking about the dam and whatever else, and then all of a sudden, he said. Well, I work for Alex Mooney, and he said, and that's when he asked him, he said, well, do, he said. Did you not hear what's going on up here, so we didn't think it was that serious of a problem. I mean, that's exactly what his, Alex Mooney's representative told him, and then he handed him a card. They didn't think it was that serious of a.
Well, in this letter right here, the, the second line says, I do not understand the problems that will be. If the Taylor County PSD goes offline, I just don't think they understand the problems.
Joe doesn't live in the county, that's what I was told, it's not gonna affect him if there's no water, oh, and I said about that. Um, another thing that somebody pointed out is, you know, we're kind of in a drought right now, and the pumps are sitting down there in the river as low as they'll go. And they're giving us about as much water as they can right now, and we are starting to suck in air because it's, they have, they, remember. Like last year, they told, they told those people up there to pull back, shut the gates because the congressmen were coming. The senators and the congressmen were coming and they had to have their banks up to maximum, so it would look pretty. And Stacy said, as soon as I shut them off, I can't do that to that PSD, as soon as I shut those gates down, nobody in the county's gonna have water. You know what they told her? To shut them off and keep, keep it up there, keep the water up there, that's exactly what they told her, they didn't care. It's sad.
Yes, it is.
That's sad. Pittsburgh told her, no, you're, the banks have to be right, you, you remember that.
I remember some of that.
Right, that whole conversation, told her, nope, you can't shut it down, you got, nope, shut her down, we gotta make it look nice. The boats, boats gotta go through.
Well, we'll do that, we'll send letters if we have to, make phone calls if we have to, and then, uh. Media if we have to, if that's the only course of action, something has to be done.
Right.
You see, Manchin, reason he hasn't been too interested, he's been busy trying to get this MVV pipeline done. And he's got it done now, so now he should be able to spend some time with our problem.
Maybe.
And Capito too, she was hot on that MV.
Right.
Pipeline, but now since that, it's been passed and then, that's been taken care of, then these. Two senators of ours should be able to. And the Colonel doesn't like to hear from the senators, is that correct?
That's exactly right, they do not, from what I hear, the higher ups in Pittsburgh do not, none of them like to hear what, from the congressional. Is what they call them, the congressional, they don't wanna hear from them. I mean, as far as even like. Stacy said last week, they got a congressional and called right down there, this is what we don't understand. Because we think Joe's not sending stuff up the way he's supposed to, this is popular consensus between Morgan. And Gary and everybody else, he just is not doing what he's supposed to, so we have to somehow get around to him.
And the only way to get around him is through the senators.
That's right.
Um, I just spoke with a lady that lives in the county and she works for Senator Mansion's office.
Okay.
Um. And she said to call their office tomorrow, I was in my office, um, she said. Probably the city, I don't know, she said possibly the city manager maybe needs to call, but I don't know if it needs to be you or who exactly is dealing with. Um, cause I asked her if she was aware of it, and she said, no, she wasn't, and then I explained a little bit, she was, okay, I vaguely remember. Um, about the water line and all of that.
Okay.
She was not sure if Mansion had even received anything, so, um.
I, no, they, I know they did, because, well, I don't have, I don't have it in here, but when I first sent it, I sent it to an Emma Bryan.
Okay.
And I got an email right back stating that she was no longer with Mansion's office and I needed to send it to somebody else instead. So I forwarded, I went ahead and forwarded it to her.
She, and what she explained on the phone was, if the Corps can prove that it's the city's. Then he can't do anything, if there's anything under a government entity that he.
Right, but, but, but the Corps can't prove it's the city, that's the only, we have nothing.
Yeah, so, I'll get your number. To the office, and her name and all that, and somebody give her a call tomorrow.
All right, I can do that, but that's the thing, it's, it's as I told Kevin, and I don't know if he told you all that in your meeting today. But I told him, this is no longer a city, this is no longer a city problem. It's a city problem, just like it's a county problem, because of. If nobody has water in the county, you understand?
Yeah, it wasn't on our agenda today, we didn't.
Right, but, but a financial thing, but on a financial thing, it's no longer the city's problem either.
Michelle lives in my mind, something about a ninety-nine year lease, is that, in my dream?
Yes, it's been like twenty years.
For what?
For the, the city lease and the PSD.
No, it wasn't ninety-nine years, that went through.
Twenty, I don't remember.
Two thousand forty-four, you all take it back.
To the city.
The water plant goes back to the city.
Yes.
Just the water plant goes back to the city, that's why I don't understand that the city says, well. We don't have anything in this, well, in twenty forty-four, forty-three or forty-four, they're gonna have to pay for this. That bill, if that bill is pumping out of the river, that's no longer PSD problem. That bill, if that bill is pumping out of the river, that's no longer PSD problem, that's gonna be the city's problem in two thousand forty-four.
If they won't be around.
By twenty years, what?
They won't be around them.
Right, well, I would need me either. But do you see what I'm saying?
I, I, I.
I think I'm gonna say.
Speak on the cities we have.
Yeah, but do you see what I mean? Because then the poor city, the poor city's gonna have to pay, you know, the poor city's gonna have to pay.
And I don't know what conversations have been had with anybody within the city. I just don't, you know, you hear it's awful.
The reason nobody wants to push on this is because we're getting water, but we're paying through the nose for it. And as long as we keep paying through.
As long as everybody has water, it's not a concern.
Nobody's gonna, we just have to show them that in order to keep this water going, it's gonna, we have to raise them, raise the bill.
That, that, right. And that, and that, like you and I talked today, that's a shame, that's a shame that everybody in this county. And everybody in the other counties is gonna have to have a rate increase. Because the federal government won't take responsibility for something that belongs to them.
Well, let's get on the horn. Let's get on the phone.
Can't hurt anything, he just sent letters to these guys.
We'll talk to the lady, do you have her contacted? We'll talk to her. We have Mr. Mooney's representative, Mr. Rhett Dusenberry that was here a couple meetings ago.
Okay.
We'll get ahold of him too and just call them all.
Call them all and start, right, because I don't, we don't know.
Until they, until they do something. So I mean, the squeaky wheel gets the grease.
Right.
Let's, we have to be the squeaky wheel, let's squeak it.
Right.
So other than that, we can't do nothing else about it. So let's squeak the wheel and move on and let's get this dang one thing fixed. I was hoping that we would have it fixed already. And yes, I want, I want better clean water again, instead of dirty river water, let's get some clean lake water.
That stinks like fish.
Well, thanks for all your perseverance to this, Michelle.
It's a mess, it's just a mess.
Let's get the mess cleaned up and let's get back to normal business.
Please send a, send a letter, make some phone calls and get the media.
Right, well, and I think Gary kept saying, let's get the media involved, throw them, throw them under the bus, you know? And it is, I don't know if he's gonna run for senator again, he may run for president, but you know. That's not gonna look real good when you say you don't care about an entire county being out of water.
Well, it's not just us being out of water, it's the fact that a federal structure has something that's broken on it.
You know.
Needs fixed.
I'm gonna, and then I'll let you all proceed. I'm sitting in there in my, in my living room the one morning and I hear that the fed, the, the Corps of Engineers gave. The city of Clarksville, two point some million dollars. For sewage going down towards Gore, going towards Shinside. So they're gonna go down there and and worry about crack water, but they're not worried about giving an entire, this was just, and I forget for how many people, it was like a hundred people. But they don't care anything about giving anything for us to take care of tens of thousands of people.
Do me a favor. Figure out how many people our water system serves.
Bob Myers told me this morning, twenty thousand.
In the city?
No, he said.
Total.
Okay.
Everybody that gets a drop of water from that dam.
From uh.
Okay.
We wanna know how many, we wanna know how many people it serves, that way we can.
And whether he sucked it out of his thumb or what.
Right, right.
People we serve with our water system.
I can do that. I can do that.
Do that, that, then that gives more ammo on.
Right.
On letters and complaints and maybe something can be done.
We appreciate all the time, thank you, Michelle.
She, but even Sheena will tell you, that whole seventy-five, twenty-five percent thing, they reached out to her immediately.
I don't, I should like, she's just tall.
I'm just telling you, I'm telling you that that's what happens. They reached out to Sheena and see, that would be great, but we can't do it because it doesn't belong to us. You know? It's a mess.
We'll try to get it figured out.
Okay. Thank you for making that call also.
Oh, you're welcome. Well, I was texting her and then she called me.
Okie doke. We'll go back to.
Okay, we found some kennels online, they are three by eight. They are stainless steel, they can be moved if we ever get a new facility, so they could be reused, but they're gonna cost about twenty-five hundred dollars a piece. We have the small building. That we could put a couple in. Is this. That is our shed. That we are currently storing lawnmower equipment in, which we will move it. But we also have, this is our run area. We have one large run area, we can have six to eight kennels, it stays pretty cool in the summer, kennels would stay in good shape.
Or under roof?
Yes, it's under roof.
That's that, that's that large blue.
The large blue, like carport that we have that we use for exercising the dogs. We're thinking if we had a load of gravel and two rolls of chain link fence, we could put the chain link fence down, put the gravel on top of it. Set the kennels on top of that, prevent the dogs from digging out. It would be a quick temporary solution and everything could be reused. So it wouldn't be like a total throwing away money in a boarding facility. Okay, yeah. But the chain link fence is a hundred and forty dollars a roll at Lowe's. I don't know without calling a trucker, but I'm assuming gravel is between six and eight hundred dollars a load right now. Anybody know?
It's probably pretty close.
Pretty close. And like I said, the kennels are twenty-five hundred. That's with the tops and all the panels.
How many?
I'm thinking six to eight, depending on how generous you're feeling. But like I said, they could be reused. They're a good heavy duties stainless steel.
Those can be used even in a new facility.
If that ever happens.
How many loads of gravel would you have?
We don't want any, we don't want like anything too big.
You guys are gonna do that on the kennels, I'll get them pressure running.
The way we usually do it is they dump it and then we use it if we need it, we put it in the park where we need it.
Just let me know when you want, not if you gotta give it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As far as our concerns.
Give them all.
Forty-five hundred, eight, eight, that's twenty thousand.
Yeah.
Really, I mean, we gotta do something.
We need something. I'm just saying, this way at least we have something toward a new facility too, you're not just throwing it away.
And they need chain link fence too.
Two rolls, yeah.
I don't know, how many rolls?
Just two, and it's a hundred and forty dollars a roll at Lowe's. So we can put it down as the bottom instead of trying to use concrete board, we can change out the gravel as they, as it gets nasty, you know?
Yeah, that's. If you need it, let's get it, it fixes our problem at least.
Just for now, I mean. Yeah, it's a temporary solution for a long-term problem, but at least it's something.
We have no long-term goal for a solution yet, so that's not even started, this is gonna have to be a couple year fix, so.
They were going ahead and putting it out on bid, had somebody do it, Brian?
Well, for a certain amount.
Where's our community correction people? Where's our community correction?
We have numbers.
We don't have any.
We have any.
We've got one guy that.
If it's Terry, his backyard is better. He's invisible there.
We've got one guy that is under one of the programs, cause he's made near the courthouse and stuff.
George.
Cause he.
If he would show up, but it's been three times, he said he'd be there.
He's now, he's finished on our side and he's strictly on home confinement side, so I'm not sure.
Well, that, I've been talking with Rick Rees and Crystal and them, and I spoke with him directly the other day and.
He has the option, I guess, of working it off or paying, I'm not really sure, but like I said, that's a home confinement.
Basically, you're putting the kennels together and sitting on a gravel.
I mean, he definitely would be capable.
We just had some manpower, I don't think we actually need that. Don't let me bite off the food with these girls wanted to. It is an animal control place.
They'll deliver them for that.
Yeah, they'll bring them.
T K products and so.
TK, yeah.
Call and see if they'll send them up for that.
Okay, I don't even know where they're located, they'll probably ship them in. No, I was just gonna get these.
Place is going to the dogs, isn't it?
They're taking over.
But I mean, they should just bolt together and sit, but I mean, I'm sure that the three of us are not gonna. The place is already, my needs are together and set up, so we not have like maintenance guys or anything that work on that?
No?
We have a part-time maintenance guy, but he's not gonna be able to get up and put those things together, we got, they have to do something.
Okay, I've been lost this, like, we're willing to help, but we need some muscle. We would be on a waiting list.
Let me ask the Humane Society this, can you get the volunteers together to put these things together?
All women.
I am the youngest. Okay, yes, I could do it, but.
All your women volunteers, you know what they have?
Women did it. They're older, they're even older. She's, she's not Humane Society, she's.
Don't worry.
Don't worry.
She gets paid about an hour.
We don't. I mean, if you want me to do it, I mean.
I didn't know if we could get volunteers, is what I'm saying, to put them together.
It's hard to get volunteers, but I say, if we get the kennels in, we'll see if we can smack them together and if we can't, then we'll have to go the contractor route.
Well, we, we, and we can put out there for volunteers and we make.
We can put a link on Facebook and, you know, sometimes my dad feels sorry, he'll send a couple workers down or.
Maybe a couple contractors, might have volunteer time to do it.
All that was done down there at the city park by volunteers.
Yeah, it's a, you know, all the time people show up and help us.
So I mean, maybe we can go ahead and get the kennels.
You're very welcome. Alright, and I'll, I'll give.
If they can't get the volunteers when we have the material there, they'll win out. Because I'm sure the contractor is gonna wanna know what they're.
Exactly what they're dealing with, and then they wanna look at it.
They wanna look at, then how things come together, cause it's gonna be hard to guess and.
Yeah, we.
What time it's gonna take to put it together.
I can ask law enforcement guys, I think some of them would help.
Yeah, we also, I mean, we've kind of, they call us all the time, I'm like, I don't have room for your, the dog.
I can ask them, you know, if they would want to volunteer a few hours or something like that, and most of them guys can turn a wrench, so.
Those kennels shouldn't be that difficult.
I'm saying, I don't know what they have, but I'm surely, you know, I'm confident a dog warden can figure it out.
Maybe today we can, we can, we can tell you to get the kennels, then we'll figure out how to get them together later.
Well, we're gonna need wiring and all that stuff, so let's do this, I'll make a motion that we purchase eight kennels. And accessories. Not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars.
I'll second that.
Motion to main and second to per twenty-five thousand dollars for eight kennels and accessories. Matter of course, motion passes.
Thank you guys very much.
We hope this helps.
How are you guys able to, um, purchase those?
We'll be in contact with you.
Okay. How are, we, we have no credit card that has that.
Your P card is not set up yet?
No.
I need that P card.
So, I mean, how are you going to do that? Are you authorizing a check to be written and you're not paid by check? I mean, how are you?
Can they invoice, can they send us an invoice?
We'll have to get ahold of the company, we'll have to contact the company and see what they'll let us do.
See if they'll invoice us, I mean, that's a lot of money.
So tomorrow, we'll work on getting ahold of them and seeing if they can get it replaced and then I'll, yeah, and I'll be in touch.
Get everything you need, if we have to get an order, then.
I mean, if they have loads, I can just go over and pick that up.
Well, and you can start that process anyways.
Yeah, I gotta go to DMV at some point, the license plate on the back of my truck, the paint come off of it.
Mine did that too, I need it.
My personal car is like that.
Yeah.
But they say you have to actually go over there and sit in order to get it, so I can do both them one day.
First we just don't make.
Actually, can we just use a Sharpie?
Might, I have a concern, it's at the ceremony of the.
Somebody told me they don't do everything, so I was gonna call and check with them.
They do now.
They do now? Okay.
But they're not any faster than I.
In your experience, I usually drive the elephants for personal stuff because they're the quickest by far, but.
I'll tell you what, the last two times I went to Clarksville at the new facility.
Like that? You must have been lucky.
And I got an, and I got an out of state John boat license with a trailer with a Maryland title.
The last time I went to get a title, three trips, three trips to the Clarksville DMV.
Take a pint of blood with you.
Well, now I found a girl that goes to like, through Nationwide or something, so I just go to her, pay her.
If you need a new license plate, you may be able to do it online.
Now I've printed the paper and it says I have to go in office. To get a replacement, cause I was, that's what I was aiming for. But.
We called that company, said they're doing on requisition and then they skip the petition.
Yeah, I'll get ahold of them.
And if you build over there a new purchase fence or whatever, bring the bill back, we'll reinforce.
Sounds good. And thank you for the call, we appreciate it, and the officers.
Give me three days, you're not gonna have it there.
Okay, sounds good.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
So we good?
I've been looking for some land.
Yeah, so, yeah, what do we do about that? We need to look for land or should we?
Yeah, I mean.
Price facilities?
Look for land for like, to start a new facility somewhere or?
Yeah.
Yeah, what about, it's a dog kennel in their backyard.
What about if you buy your house?
I don't work in my backyard.
Can you do some land for lease?
You can get farm rates on those though, but you can get farm rates on those though, if you put dogs on that, no.
Even the cattle dogs? Well, we could do farm animals there too.
Travis moved my head.
I don't like that question either, cause I kinda turn up my vet bills for my cattle.
You know, that, that is gonna be a serious situation to find where to put it. You know, that's not gonna cause problems and, uh, can we buy any more land up in that, uh, where the, oh, dog.
I vote for the backside of Westerman Hallards, really close to my house. I lost land over there, I could sell you an acre.
Couple acres.
Yeah. And then I couldn't hear him across the hill.
I know what it's saying.
Does the commission own the Rosemont Ball Field?
We do.
We do?
I mean, there's a lot of dogs down from Rosemont. We would have a very part of all.
Somebody's supposed to be fixing that up.
They came to us.
A group from Barber County came.
Okay.
Came to a commission meeting and, uh, are gonna.
Turn it back into a baseball field?
Yeah.
Cool, they need it.
They do?
It would be nice.
We, nothing was being done, we thought, well, at least they cut the grass.
Is that, I think that might be like the drought helping hands, and I, so did this, yeah, that's a good group of people.
What, tomorrow?
No.
But if that falls through.
I don't know, the people in the camper might not like it.
If you put a backboard on.
Yeah, I think, I think it would be.
You could, I mean, you really can there.
And honestly, they don't bark twenty-four seven, they bark twenty, so.
Yeah.
Is there any land down at the end of Camp Oak?
They're selling a big spot down there, a house and a.
They already has a kennel.
Yeah, but they're like, but they're like, um, rundown and so.
Yeah, they are a little.
I just picked up a dog down there like, man, I was like. I seen that.
But the ones further down, past the campgrounds.
And that's, is that where Crowther's on? I think he walked back in there at one time, Tim Crowther's.
There might be some of that down there.
They sell it.
Kind of centrally located in the county and down away from everything.
Yeah, because it is loud, it does.
I mean, where you, where you're at now, I mean, there's some land around the facility now that is owned. So I mean, maybe some excavation just may be done up there.
Yeah.
I mean, if you look at the tax maps, if that's pretty accurate.
Might be a possibility to have a building.
There's probably room to expand up there, cause really, that's a good spot, cause. There, it, 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 it can get loud and then we could put it around any type of people's houses, I know, I wouldn't wanna hear.
I've been going to the side of my house.
No.
Cause round the way where the old landfill was, that that could be cleaned up.
That's, that's what I mean, where that landfill was, you could probably excavate that out, clean it up and.
I don't think it'd be too hard to get sewage up there either, cause it's not too far away from it. We had a hard time getting city water up there, but we got that done.
Yeah, sewers would just be down herbs.
Yeah, I just had the sewer pump and, and it was like three hundred seventy-one dollars. The sewer up there pumped. So the price went up. It was like two something last year. I was like, holy cow. That's crazy.
All right, well, hopefully this fixes us for a little while.
Yes, we appreciate it, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, girls, for all you're doing, we appreciate it, and, uh, to help the all we can.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good one.
Good luck, thanks.
Thank you all. Okay, courthouse renovation project.
Two things, I have, I do have a first change order for the urinals, which is three thousand and ninety-one dollars, which will be a urinal for the bathroom on the second floor and the bathroom on the first.
Three thousand ninety-one dollars?
Three thousand ninety-one dollars.
I make a motion to approve. Second.
Motion is made and second to approve three thousand ninety-one dollars for change order number one for the courthouse renovation project.
And with that being said, the project will begin Monday. So, the twelfth is when the, actually, the contractor will be on site that evening, at five o'clock, to get started, and they'll start on the second floor and start working their way through. As we decide this one, please.
Is that two urinals or three?
That's two, one for the second floor and one for the main floor, there's not one downstairs now.
Anybody downstairs, they have to let the pee in the grass.
And we're good with that, Patricia?
Yes, that's all I have.
Okay, the next thing we need to do is approve to advertise for new removal contract. How many year contract was before?
It was a three-year contract, and it's up now, so, it seems like one is far away, but.
So we just need to advertise bids for the three-year contract.
So move.
Second. Move is made, second is made, to approve the advertising of the new removal contract. Then next thing we need to do is update the two thousand twenty-three commission meeting schedule.
Yeah, we have two, um, dates that need to be changed, um, we were having Tuesday, um, August the eighth, we need to change that to August the first. And then we have Tuesday, August the fifteenth, and we need to change that to August the fifteenth. One of those weeks you got a bit of conference, and then the other week, um, just needs to be changed, because there's just not going to be a possibility for all of you to be here for that meeting.
This is what we changed it to, this is what we wanted to do.
So, just those two dates, the eighth to the first, and the fifteenth through to the twenty-second.
Do you wanna approve the?
Make a motion to approve.
So move.
Motion is made and seconded to approve the commission meeting schedule update, no other issues, motion passes. And next on the line is Board of Health, Board Reappointment Consideration. Uh, the Health Department is requesting that Judy Collett be reappointed to the board. Uh, there's a long letter here, but in a nutshell, that's, that's it, we'd like to keep Ms. Collett on the board, because the Health Department is requesting that she stay.
I say move.
I second.
Motion is made and second to approve Judy Collett's.
Anytime somebody agrees to be on a board, roll it, let it be done.
And we need to approve real estate personal property books for two thousand twenty-three.
Yes, you.
So we need a motion to approve these first.
Under the motion, we approve.
Second.
Motion is made, second to approve the personal property books for tax year two thousand twenty-three, matter opposed, motion passes.
Have to be a blue pen or a black pen, where?
Probably has to be blue, should be blue.
Every time I get a blue pen here, it just tears.
I know nothing.
I think that's blue, check it out.
Let me see here.
I know nothing, Tony.
Yes, it is.
All right, you.
Nothing's been said. Where'd you get this from?
Out of my drawer.
Okay.
I got another one.
Oh, do you? It's in my drawer.
You probably have a blue pen, I mean, I usually get the install.
By golly, there he is.
That's what I figured, I was coming.
Now I've got two. Christie, you do a fine job.
Thank you, Daddy.
Appreciate what you did there for that water situation. Yeah, you know, you, come call you babe or whatever, might jump somebody.
Maybe, oh, but.
The more people involved with that are, you know. Cause they've been fighting this for a long time, and it's a territorial thing, um.
Once we get some kind of notification from Manchin and Capito, that, that they're aware of this, I, I, I don't mind sending them a personal note to them, I know both of them and they know me by first names.
Yeah.
Every time Joe sees me, you know, he gives me a big hug and all that bull crap. In this world, I guess you gotta do a lot of bull crap.
While you guys are signing that, we have three tower modifications to consider, one on two ninety State Farm Tower, and four thirty Barkis Tower Road, and five sixty-six Ammon School Road, they're just modifications to the towers per the ordinance that we are currently trying to rescind.
Yes.
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second if they'll rescind it.
Motion is made and second to approve the tower modifications until the end of December, matter opposed, motion passes. I did.
All righty, I got this done.
If you don't, it's.
Okay. I keep them for a while.
You want a blue pen, then you got one, don't you?
And if you wanna move on down, we've got approval of new hires.
There he's got them, all right.
It's on Cameron Ford, he passed the civil service examination, he's been on a DMV hire and was wanting to be full-time status. This is a letter from the, uh, to you all, from the Civil Service Commission, with all the signatures of the representatives.
I make a motion to approve, Mr. Ford, then?
It will be placing Cameron Ford in a full-time deputy position, as he is a certified officer and has passed his department's civil service exam. Please make it effective June the seventh, at the starting salary of forty thousand five hundred, the benefits as well as his five thousand dollars sign-on bonus which should be paid twenty-five hundred dollars on his next pay and twenty-five hundred dollars a year later. So he's gonna stay here before he gets the other point up.
Amen, I say.
We have a motion, do I hear a second?
I'm checking.
Motion is made and seconded to approve Cameron Ford, matter opposed, motion passes.
I guess you can, this is yours, at least.
How many have you still short, Karen?
Uh, we've got the one boy that's in the night, the wear boy, you know Garrett, he's still in the ninety day. Uh, he'll be retesting again here next week, I believe, and, uh, then it all depends on what happens with Delgado, we can put somebody in Delgado's place until he comes back, it's temporary hire, maybe.
And if this other boy's hired, then if he, uh.
If, if we get, if, if we get Garrett on, and then we'd have to decide on, on, on Delgado. And then after July one, we had a budget to try and get another officer, if we do that, we're looking to try and get somebody to do the school. Other than that, everything's been going pretty good, with everything's going on, and we had to deal with the, the doors and stuff. What caused that, we was, John's door went in there and water or something got in, it wouldn't work, and then finally got him to come in, but when the guy, I guess that computer's old, when the guy goes to reboot it and he didn't back it up, it all crashed, so, but it's fixed, I think everybody's working now.
I think so.
And, uh, so if your card don't work, some, some cards, if it worked once or twice or something, then it wouldn't work anymore, but they've got all that worked out, so. Other than that, that's it, if it breaks again, just gotta fix it. Yeah, that's, well, I think they should be updated to about seven.
Yeah, well, one, that computer runs on Windows seven, which is, there's really not any support for anymore, so I think they're pricing it out to, to upgrade it to a Windows ten computer.
Yeah, just let us know what the upgrade would cost, cause it means something that has to work.
Okay, all right. Any questions? See y'all, thank you.
Do we have any elected officials?
Only thing, I'm not elected official, but I do wanna throw out, is that we did have our E D A building open house, um, we had it on first Friday. I think throughout the day, we had probably, you know, a handful, maybe thirteen people, Tony came, and I appreciate that, and Jay Taylor came and stayed with us that evening. Vibe was open for the public to come and see it and kinda look around, and so, um, and I wanted to make mention of that. Um, Mount Near Country made us some rack cards, so I gave each one of you a rack card, just so you could see it, so we're gonna place them throughout the county. Did them free of charge, so I was tickled with that, so, um.
Who made those?
Mount, Mount Near Country, the C B B Susan Roan. And, and two of her girls came to our open house, so appreciated that, so I just wanted to make mention of that.
Um, my elected official report is, I'm still working with the Sheltered Workshop. Uh, we, the meeting that was supposed to be first Thursday and June had to be canceled, because not enough people could be there. But we're diligently working with the Job Squad out of Clarksburg, and things look maybe more promising now than they have ever about getting the thing up and running. Uh, I have two meetings this week with, uh, Workforce Investment Board. One is, uh, Thursday at Fairmont, and the other one is at Gourmet Express on Friday. That's, that's all I can report about officials. You wanna report anything, Sam, or not?
I'm good to go, I've spoken enough. Or if we're good?
I'm good, I'm not gonna run meetings, canceled.
We'll move on down the waiver sentence, if we have any.
Yeah, we do, right here.
That lady on the end is doing a fine job.
He's got where they need to be signed.
So we have three waivers. Daryl Pickle, Laurel Rogers, Betty Ann Huffman. And you're all getting this?
Yes.
Do you wanna approve the waivers?
Second.
Motion is made and seconded to approve the waivers, motion passes. And Tom Reese's consolidation. So he's gonna be mad.
I know.
I think another.
I think it's just that. Now, these are just corrective tickets for twenty twenty-three that is coming out.
We have one consolidation, and we have a lot of exonerations.